21, 2021, 7:30. This meeting is held on video conference following our examination of the interior of the library. And due to the pandemic, it would be not feasible to have the full board in the library at this time. So with that, we started the meeting by having Jennifer do a roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Here.
Ms. Krishnam.
Here.
Mr. Globinger?
I'm here.
Mr. Parzy?
Here.
Ms. Chu?
Here.
Ms. Young? Mr. Fromm?
Yeah, I'm here. Jay, could you please read the oath of office to, well, Abby's not here, Jamie and Barbara for the moment. But they have it, don't they? They have it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so go ahead, Jay.
So, are we gonna do this one by one, or do we want to do it?
You should do it one by one.
Okay, so Barbara, why don't we start with you? Do you have the oath in front of you? And you're muted, so we need you unmute.
I have it.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind reading the oath of office in front of you.
I, Barbara Unical, having been elected to the Office of Library Trustee in the village of Northbrook in the county of Cook, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Library Trustee to the best of my ability.
Great, and Barbara will need you to sign your sworn statement too, please. Okay, Jamie? If you'd like to unmute yourself, and if you would also like to read the oath of office?
Sorry, I don't have that in front of me, where do I find it?
Well, I can read it too, if you want to read it back.
That sounds good, thank you, thank you, Jay.
I, Jamie Chu.
I, Jamie Chu.
Having been elected to the office.
Have been elected to the office.
Of Library Trustee in the village of Northbrook.
Have been elected to the Office of Library Trustee in the village of Northbrook.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Library Trustee to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Library of Trustees to the best of my ability.
Okay, and it sounds like you don't have the official oath printed in front of you, but we'll need you to print it and sign it to give back to Kate, please. Okay.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you, Jamie. Abby, welcome, it's time for your oath of office. Would you unmute yourself, please? Do you have the oath of office printed by chance, Abby? It's okay, if you don't, I'll read it to you.
Do I need it printed?
No, as long as you can say it. You can read it yourself, or if you'd like, I can read it, and you can repeat it back, whichever you prefer.
I have it in here, hold on, I can read it.
Okay, well, still we'd like, she's pulling it up, I think, Carlos.
I have it, I have it.
Okay.
So I just supposed to read what's on here?
Yes.
Okay. I, Abby Young, having been elected to the Office of Library Trustee in the village of Northbrook in the county of Cook, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Library Trustee to the best of my ability.
Thank you, welcome back, Abby. Yes, Barbara, Jamie, Abby, welcome to the board. Carlos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Having sworn in our new trustees, Carlos, you are now no longer a trustee.
That's correct, but we still need to get a nominating committee going. I have a question, I think that the oath of office should say, "I do solemnly swear", and you can choose between solemnly swear or affirm, you don't have to say both. Just a thought, anyway, go ahead, who's the nominating committee?
Well, that would be me, since you're no longer president, Carlos.
Well, we don't know, we don't know yet.
No, 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 I'm vice president, so I'm taking over as vice president, Carlos.
Oh, go ahead then.
So.
You did take.
So Abby?
Yes.
As the chair of the nominating committee, would you like to present the slate?
Yes. So, on behalf of the nominating committee, I would like to present the slate of for president, Mr. Jay Globinger, for vice president, myself, Abby Young, and for secretary, Ms. Mara Krishnam.
And then treasurer.
Oh, I'm sorry, and for treasurer, the esteemed Jamie Chu.
Thank you, Abby, are there any nominations from the floor? Hearing none and seeing none, can I have a motion to accept the slate of officers as presented for the fiscal year 2022, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mara, I believe you seconded, but you're muted.
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer, will you please have a roll call vote?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzy?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes, so congratulations to the new board for new officers. All right, so next, Carlos, I think we're moving on to the consent agenda before we get to the fun stuff. So as we go to the consent agenda, is there anyone who would like to pull anything off of the consent agenda to address separately? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll make them, or ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Jennifer, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzy?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Great, so the consent agenda's been approved. Public comments, Kelly, are there any public, Kelly's not here, so is it Jennifer?
I'm here.
Oh, Kelly is here.
Yeah, there are no public comments. Just a reminder, for those of you who are here in the audience, if you do have a public comment, you can type that in the chat, and I will read it out.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to make a revision to the agenda to move up the portion of the agenda regarding Carlos?
You don't have to do a motion if you don't want to, Jay, you can just skip to it.
Okay, let's skip to the part with Carlos. Would you like to take over and present to Carlos?
Do we want to do the resolution first, and then we can do the fun stuff that Carlos hopefully has not opened since I dropped it at his house this afternoon?
Sure, does Carlos have the fun stuff?
He does have the fun stuff in his, hopefully. He's not giving it away at all, I don't know, do you, Carlos? Okay, yeah.
And Carlos, you haven't opened it yet?
Oh, we can't see it because you have your background on. There's stuff there, though.
We can't see it because of your background.
Okay.
Now his head disappears.
You want me to open it?
Yeah, but we can't see because of your fake background, we can't see.
I'm not gonna show you my office.
We've seen it before, a hundred times. We've seen it before.
That's a fake background with fake, fake family photos?
All right, Carlos, before you open the box, there is a resolution I like to read, and then after I read it, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
And you'll have it, yeah, it's, thank you. Okay, so whereas Carlos Fromm has given freely this time and been a valued presence at the Northbrook Public Library as a library trustee since 2000, and whereas Carlos has served as an officer of the board as vice president and president, and whereas the Northbrook Public Library has greatly benefited from Carlos's knowledge, ability, and experience, and whereas Carlos is dedicated to the mission of quality public library service and a fiscally responsible library, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Northbrook Public Library wishes to credit Carlos for his continued efforts to help the library grow in ways that benefit the community, and whereas the Board acknowledges Carlos's contributions during the 2015 auditorium and 2018 collaborative construction projects, and whereas Carlos has participated in numerous outreach events within the community, and whereas Carlos has contributed to creating a strong plan for the development of the library for many years to come, now therefore being resolved, the Board of Trustees at Northbrook Public Library publicly commends Carlos Fromm for his commitment to libraries and thanks them for his years of public service as a library trustee. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution and certificate of appreciation for Carlos?
Motion to approve everything you just said.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, I'll second it.
Jennifer, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Globinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzy?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has passed, Carlos. Thank you so much for your many years, I think for all of us. It's been an joy and really a nice experience to work with you over these years. You know, it's hard to think that Sharon and I are now the most senior in terms of time on the board, because it just seems like not too long ago, the two of us were walking in for the first time and taking the oath of office and meeting you. And having spent the past 10 years learning from you is what has been an experience we've all, or I should say I have, really appreciated and enjoyed having spent that time with you. And thank you for having given us that opportunity.
Thank you, guys, it has been a pleasure serving with you. You were a terrific bunch of trustees, and I enjoyed every moment. And I think you're terrific for the library. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos, we do hope you're gonna come sometimes, you know, every once in a while, as the public.
I will attend, I will attend, but I, not for the short period, we're leaving. We're going to do some traveling. But I like the library, I always enjoyed it. I remember spending many, many, many hours when I was studying and Sandy was at home with the two kids, and it was good, so. It was payback time for me.
So speaking of payback, if you would like to open the box now?
I would like to open the card. Thanks, Kate, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
The card was from me, everything else is from the full board.
Okay, is there anything you would like to say to Carlos while we're at it?
Yeah, on the record, it has been six years since I've been here with five and a half as Carlos as president, and it has been a really, like Jay, like you were saying, it has been a learning experience for me as well. And of course, on both fronts, because of course Carlos is not only my board president, or was until a few minutes ago, but was, is also currently the Rotary president, and so I get to see him and work with him, at least after this, I'll still have him and get to work with him at Rotary, but it has been really helpful just to learn about the community. And Carlos is a wealth of knowledge, and I know I can still call on him for any information on the history of Northbrook, and, I mean, Sandy too. And that has, that has been much appreciated, definitely in my early days, but even since, so it has been a real pleasure.
Kate, I hope I, I am alive when you retire, so I can come to your party. I hope you retire from your library.
Well, thanks, Carlos, that's many, 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 retirement is not something that I get to look forward to in the near future, but thank you. And along with the resolution, I know that I'll, everyone on the board, but just in case other people, so we have the resolution, the board just passed, we cheated and had Jay sign it early. But we also have another beautiful resolution that was passed by the village board last month honoring Carlos for all of his many years of service as well.
Huh, this one is signed by somebody named Sandra Fromm?
I don't know, are you familiar with anyone by that name?
Yeah, she used to be some, you know, you asked me about the history of Northbrook, and she used to be president around here for a while.
For a while, right?
For a long while, we missed their, oh, nice, what is this? Oh, wow. This is wonderful. Sandy will know why I like this so much. It's, it's called in my office in the basement, so.
Especially when you're wearing shorts.
And then I have, oh, wow.
And Carlos, that was custom designed and made for you in the collaboratory.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Beautiful.
That's so nice, what does it say, it has your initials on it?
Yes, yes, take a look.
That's so cool.
Very classy.
Yeah.
And then on the back, it lists his years of service as a trustee.
Yeah, when you retire, you can get one too.
Or just go to the collaboratory.
I could make one.
Make one.
Where's the fun in that?
I don't know.
We were talking with Kate about the success of the collaboratory, and I think that that's basically the future of the library. Anyway.
But, God, we just had a comment from the public, I think we need to have it read into the minutes, please?
Yes, we did, this was directed at all panelists from Sandy Fromm. It says Carlos is always cold, that's perfect for him.
Okay, guys, thank you very much, enjoy it, I had a great time with all of you, and I'll miss you, but not too much.
I miss you, Carlos.
Thank you, happy travels.
Bye, Carlos. Bye, Carlos, check in with us.
Okay.
I know, it's the end of an era.
Yes.
That is harder than I thought it was gonna be, Jay.
Well, Sharon, you kept it together.
I know, but not really.
Okay.
It's just you don't meet people like Carlos, like you just, you don't meet people like Carlos, who's given so much to the community, it's amazing.
Carlos and Sandy, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of institutional memory between those two.
Kate, are you ready to do the staff report?
I sure am, Jay. So we have a lot going on, before I talk, though, I actually wanted to see if Kelly, because summer reading is about to start, and I realized I hadn't, Jay, put this on our annotated agenda, but Kelly wants to give you just a brief overview of summer reading before I dive into some of the other stuff.
Yeah, so, summer reading is upon us, it starts June 1st. This year, the theme is Reading Colors Your World. That is a theme that is sponsored by iRead from the Illinois Library Association. We always try to support our state association when we choose our theme. And this year, we're very excited about it, the artwork is really beautiful, you may have seen on the newsletter cover, or if you've been into the library, posters outside as well as inside the library. And we are very excited because this year, we don't have to do it all remotely. So staff are working in the building, patrons can come into the building to sign up for summer reading and pick up their incentives, but there is still the online component, so anybody who wants to sign up online and log from home can do that as well. So that is something that we had prior to the pandemic that has really been built up since then. We're also trying really hard to support our local businesses, which we know need that support right now, so we've purchased a lot of our incentives from local businesses, coupon giveaways for younger kids, weekly drawings for both kids and adults. I've mentioned a few times, the program is also for adults, so I'd like to invite everybody who is on the board as well as in the audience to sign up. Again, that starts on June 1st. This year, due to the pandemic, we're not doing our typical in-person kickoff event, but we are having a drive-through event, so Saturday, June 5th, and Sunday, June 6th, you can drive through the library's parking lot and pick up some fun giveaways and learn more about the reading program. So it's Saturday evening and Sunday morning after library hours. And we've got lots of great programs lined up. We're also really excited to tie in the lobby's new spotlight display and display books that tie into the Reading Colors Your World theme. So we hope to see everybody sign up, it goes for babies, youth, teens, and adults.
Thanks, Kelly. So that was the fun part of the report, I have a bunch of other updates to share with you in addition to what was in my written report. There's a few things going on at the village that I wanted to share. You hopefully all saw my email, and then reminder in my report that the village's climate action plan is, is out for review by the community. I hope you'll take some time to go through that and make public comments on it. This is something that they've been working on, we have a representative, Jill Franklin, one of our great reference librarians, who served on the committee as the library representative. She'll be joining the board next month to give you a more detailed overview. The village board is expected to sign the climate action plan or approve the climate action plan later this summer, and they are going to be inviting the other units of local government to adopt different parts of the plan, so as we progress through the summer, more information will be forthcoming, and we'll have more information on that for the board. But if you have any questions related to the climate action plan as you are reading through and making comments, please feel free to share those with me, especially if it relates to anything with the library, so that I can gather that and get answers from some of the staff at the village, or I'm hoping that we can bring in a village staff member later this summer to talk in more detail about how it will relate to us as well, and that that will be something that I think is gonna be a very big focus in the village for the next few years, well, I mean, climate action permanently, but that this will be pretty big, at least in the, in the near future. And then the other thing I wanted to give you, though this wasn't my written report, I have a bit of an update on the Cedar Lane project. So just to kind of go back a little bit, you may recall that we used to have a lot of trucks hit our building, luckily that hasn't happened in a while. We tried to come up with solutions, what, Jay, are you muted? You're still muted, sorry.
So thank you, COVID.
Yeah, I know, right? A hundred percent. So we brought in a firm to give us some options on what we could do to reroute traffic. It was complicated, and we didn't come up with a solution. We knew the village was gonna be working on their Cedar Lane project, and, and then that kind of got put on hold, again, thank you, COVID. So we had started talking with the Director of Development, Tom Popeard, who has now retired, in 2019 into 2020, everything got paused. That project has now started picking up, and in the last week, we actually have met and gotten more information than what I had in your report that I wrote last week from Matt Farmer, who's the civil engineer at the village, who is now heading the project now that Tom has retired. And so the project is now, is, they're kind of moving it pretty quickly. They plan to do construction starting next spring, which means bids would go out in February. This project impacts us, the village hall, and Greenbrier. But it is ultimately the streetscape that they're looking at, they're looking to put a bike path in on the Greenbrier side. Our big piece of this is figuring out a way to navigate and help with the trucks and buses dropping people off when we eventually go back to large in-person programs again. And so what they are, so they're looking at different options for this. They're gonna be presenting a formal plan to the village board at the June 8th meeting, kind of giving them a high-level overview, so we don't, I don't have that to share with you yet. But they are encouraging the school board and the library board to consider attending the June 8th village board meeting, if you want to get a snapshot of that. I will also share the recording afterwards, so everyone has it. But then on June 10th, they're going to have an open house where members of the public, and it would like any of the board who are here, again, with the school or the library, to attend, Anna Aiman and I will be attending between 4:00 and 7:00 PM to go to village hall, where they will have posters of the different designs that we can look at and give comments on. Then at our June 17th meeting, we would have Matt Farmer come and present the full plan to our board to weigh in. This is a little bit of a complicated process, because we were gonna do a landscaping project that we paused because we didn't know how the Cedar Lane project was gonna go. What we're, what we, the village and the school, are hoping to do is create more of a campus feel between the three different municipal buildings right here. But that kind of starts with how Cedar Lane looks, and then we can get into the landscaping piece, so that, I'll have more information on in June, we just talked with Matt Farmer about this concept on Monday, so it's all very fresh, and we don't have any details on anything. But because we have three different units of local government kind of weighing in on this, it's timing and calculus, and a little bit challenging. So, so I know that that isn't a ton of information, but I hope, and I'll send, tomorrow, I'll send everyone the date and time and how to log in for the village board meeting and the info on the open house on June 10th, so that anyone who wants to can attend. And then, of course, everyone will be here for the June board meeting, where you'll get more information. So all of that is happening, and just to make that first week in June even busier, you may recall, June 7th is when we have our lobby reopening. So June 5th and 6th is the summer reading, drive-through kickoff event. June 7th is the lobby reopening when we go back to our normal hours. June 8th is the village board meeting, June 9th is when we're gonna do our ribbon cutting for the lobby, and June 10th is open house. So you could choose to come to Cedar and Cherry like every day for it, for that entire week, if you so choose. It's gonna be very busy. So that is everything I had, I'm happy to answer any questions people have on any other parts of my written report, if you have any questions, or any questions on what I just shared.
Okay, and then. Say a little more, Kate, I'm sorry, about that campus feel, what do you mean by that? Like to kind of better integrate the buildings?
Yeah, so right now, we all have very autonomous landscaping, right? It doesn't flow, we don't flow from the library into the village hall, Greenbrier is very much set apart. So the goal is to create a more unified feel between Walters and Cherry and on both sides of Cedar, so that when people walk, it feels like it's part of a campus. Maybe with tulips. Probably not with tulips, but maybe.
They're beautiful, they only last a few days, but.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, does that help, Kayon?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Sure.
Think we're good, Kate, you wanna go to the next topic?
Think we're good, Kate. You want to go to the next topic?
Sure. So then the reopening plan update. As you know, because I emailed you guys, the CDC has released new guidance on masks. It was completely unexpected for people. The state has updated their guidance, but it's very murky in that they said, well, obviously, we're going to follow the CDC's guidance because that's what we've been doing, but we strongly recommend that businesses continue requiring masks. And if you're in Cook County, as we are, they have said, and if you do allow people to take off their mask if they're fully vaccinated, you have to literally track every single person, which is obviously concerning on many fronts, which is why we have chosen to stay with the option of having everyone wear masks, no matter, we're not asking people if they're vaccinated. To me, it's an accessibility issue. Just like you wouldn't say, oh, you're deaf, sorry. Most people aren't, so we're not going to offer closed captioning. We want everyone who comes into the library to feel like they can access the library. We know that while 12- to 15-year-olds are still are now able to get vaccinated, none of them are fully vaccinated yet, and 2- to 11-year-olds are not. We have a number of immunocompromised people in the community. We also have people that, for one reason or another, are unable to get vaccinated. We want every person coming into the library to feel like they can safely use the library. So at this point, I don't, I mean, it's possible that as the summer progresses, this will change, but for right now, that is, that is where we are standing, and I don't anticipate that changing relatively soon. Especially as we reopen on June 7th to full hours, we expect that there will, of course, be more people because we're open more hours. We want to keep it as safe as we can until everyone in our community is able to be safely vaccinated. So and the vaccination rates in Northbrook are pretty fantastic. And so I know I already reminded everyone, but June 9th is also, oh, I put that under reopening. With reopening on June 7th with the lobby, June 9th will be when we do our ribbon cutting at 7:00. It's going to be really quick photo op. But I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has on any other parts of the reopening update. Obviously, the mask stuff wasn't in my written report. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Kate, my feeling on the mask is that we have a very high number of vulnerable populations that come in, so work to the accessibility issue. I feel that having people continue to wear masks really helps those vulnerable populations, whether they're seniors or infants feel comfortable coming into the library. I think it also should hopefully help the staff feel that they're not put in this uncomfortable situation. I do think there are some questions, though, as to how the staff is going to be directed to respond if they do have a patron come in who says, I'm vaccinated, I don't need to wear a mask anymore, so I don't want to wear a mask. And maybe if you could take them back to dress up.
I would be happy to. We have already sent out talking points for staff. We have an updated training that we're just finishing up that will go out on Monday. We had done training before when we reopened about mask wearing in general, like we've done a couple rounds of training on this to help staff be comfortable. We've been lucky. We haven't really had a lot of people that have been jerks. Kelly and I were walking through the library the other day and someone had taken off a mask and Kelly just went up to them and said, oh, hey, you actually still need to wear a mask. And they were like, oh, and then put one on. So we've been lucky in that, but we are going to continue addressing it and to reminding people that even though they are fully vaccinated, we still have a guideline in place at the library that everyone that enters needs to be masked in order to stay in the building. And so we'll be continuing to do more training with staff, but have already started. Are you guys hearing that feedback? I don't know why mine is doing it that much.
Kate, can I ask a question about that? Because one thing I've been thinking about is I've seen, you know, that the mask requirements are getting dropped. You know, all these people in stores that have had to have these confrontations and altercations with people. I don't think you've had anything like that in the library, but is the policy going to be like you ask the person nicely? And then if they don't follow, like, how aggressive are we going to be, is my question?
Well, we're not going to manhandle them.
Well, I know, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, this is not unlike any other thing that happens when they're violating our policies, right? This would be no different than if someone started screaming at another staff member or another patron that was in the library or shouting obscenities or doing any other activity that we do not allow on premise. We first approach calmly and state matter-of-factly what behavior is expected in the library. If they argue, we give them another chance to change. We then escalate it up to one of our librarians in charge or a security monitor who can often, you know, our security monitors, especially on the evenings and weekends, are excellent at de-escalating situations and getting people to comply. We very rarely have to ask people to leave, and when we do, they just say, I'm sorry, but you won't be able to stay. And they kind of without physically touch, like escort them out, say like, come on, we need to leave, we need to have you leave now. In the six years I've been here, I want to say that we've maybe had to call the police two or three times when someone appeared to maybe be combative or started, you know, getting in people's faces. That most of the time, our staff are well able and have had training so that they can get people out. But if it did come to that, we would ask the police to come and escort the person out, not pressing charges, but just saying that they wouldn't be allowed back in the library until they can comply with the guidelines that we have set forth, such as wearing a mask or not shouting at people.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Now, when you equate it to your other policies, I guess it's no different.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, it does, it feels different, right? It feels different right now.
Yeah, I think just reading those emails that you get, I mean, you definitely get some frustrated patrons out there. So I think that's just something everyone is concerned about. I think they were just concerned about access, to be honest, in hours. I think once they're in the library and I think wearing a mask is something that hopefully everyone will just get on board. I think they just want to get back inside.
Yeah, it's funny, though. Our curbside numbers are still really high. We still are only seeing a couple hundred people come in. So we're open right now eight hours a day instead of 12, but our door counts are down by like, they were down by 90%, now they're down by 80%. So more people are starting to come in. But I find that, I think, you know, people tend to be more angry in writing than in person, which is fair, and I'd rather have it that way.
Okay, unless there's other questions on the mask policy and the reopening, I thought we were going to have Barbara give her an opportunity to talk about the training.
Oh, yeah, that Barbara went to on Saturday. She went to the third of the ILA trustee training.
I did, and it was very well done. There were three programs, each taught by an expert in that particular area. And they were very practical. The first one was on finance and very helpful for somebody who was a new trustee. It was some basic information that was helpful when I met with Anna to go further into finances. There was another workshop on succession, planning for succession for your library director. And the third workshop was on the relationship between a board trustee and the director, what the boundaries are, who does what. And, you know, it wasn't anything that was earth-shattering, but it was basic information that was really helpful to me. So thank you for the opportunity.
Barbara, as we go along and, you know, you're in the meetings, you know, please feel free to ask questions if you're not sure what we're supposed, you know, what we're doing. And you know, there's a lot of things that are going to be, you know, your first time doing it. And please feel free to ask about past, you know, issues and past experience for background and understanding. I think there's some, if you haven't already looked at it, information on the trustee portal that's helpful. You know, as a new trustee. And Kate, did you get Barbara a new trustee?
We, we did the orientation a few weeks ago and then followed up with the finance portion just this week.
Yeah, the finances is throughout the year, Barbara, you'll see there's a lot of opportunities to ask questions as we go through the budgeting process and the, you know, process for determining what next year's lobby will be. And it's, the first time around, it's usually a little confusing as to how they relate to each other. But Anna is really good about explaining it.
And I'm not shy. I'd rather know than guess. So thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Kate, you want to move on to the report on the RFID and circulation innovation?
Yeah, so we're still finishing off a few punch list items, but are on track to have everything opening June 7th, which is good because we are. The mural is about halfway painted. It'll be finished this weekend. We unfortunately got some bad news today, and that is that our automated material handler is delayed. It is in the country, which is a good first step. It has not cleared customs yet, so we anticipate it taking at least another four days to get up here from Atlanta. We do anticipate the earliest it could be installed is next Thursday. In talking with Biblioteca today, they said that they felt very strongly and that we would have it installed before June 7th. I expressed my great disappointment at the delay. I know that they didn't cause the delay, except that they could have started the order earlier, but that is, of course, neither here nor there at this point. We will work, Erin, our circ manager, is already working on a plan to let staff know what is going on and to adjust as needed so we can get everyone trained and comfortable. It is a shame, though, because this, of course, is one thing that staff might be having to scramble to learn how to use right before we reopen. It is very simple, but it still is one more thing. On the other side of things, we are well in hand with moving circ back downstairs, getting our new popular picks and spotlight collections up and installed so that they're ready for June 7th. And I'm happy, as always, I know we're meeting virtually, but if anyone wants to pop in and get a peek, now it really looks like it's going to look. There's still a few pieces that still have to be moved around, but just let me know, Anna, or I, or Kelly. One of us is here every day and is happy to show any of the board members who want to come by how things are looking right now. I know I'm sending you pictures, but but yeah, so we're in good shape.
Thank you, Kate. I guess we'll move on to a new business, since we've already dealt with the outgoing board member recognition. The next item is the in-person or virtual board meetings discussion. And so this is a question as to whether or not, starting in June, we want to move to some form of physical in-person meeting, whether it's the whole board, a hybrid with us having those who are comfortable being in the library and those who are not comfortable being remote, or a more formal, having all of us in the library, but allowing the public to participate via remote. So that as we move into the reopening phases, we are moving back to in-person. One issue to consider is that, as Kate, I think, pointed out in the materials, the, was it the governor's executive order is through the end of the month. There's an expectation that it's going to be extended. And if it's extended, then we can continue, you know, meet virtually, but if it's not extended, then we have, I guess, no choice but to go in in-person. So I think we're really just trying to see, you know, what everyone's feelings are and thoughts and comfort level is as we move into the reopening phases, we're going back into in-person. So Sharon, could you like to?
Yeah, I'm comfortable. I think it's time to go back in. I think the sense of normalcy, I don't know how everyone feels, but I've been vaccinated and I just think it's time to go back in. You know, I've been on the board the longest, and I think this is very productive, these Zoom meetings, but I also feel that it would just be productive socially, mentally, to get back into the building for our meetings.
Thanks, Sharon. Abby, do you have thoughts?
I'm ready to go back in. I'm ready to leave my house. I would love to see all you in person. So, and I think it would be productive.
Okay. Jamie?
I'm good with going back in.
Okay, Kayon?
Yeah, I'm vaccinated, so I'm fine with coming back in.
Laura?
I'm comfortable with going back in. I, my question would be, is there going to be a period of time, we have very few public who attend, but do we want to make them? Do they have to be, I mean, are they going to attend within the same boardroom, or will they attend somewhere else? How will that work?
I was thinking we would start in the auditorium so that there would be plenty of space, but we would also, I think, need to offer a streaming version. It's very convenient and I think makes it much more accessible. And I think it's really lovely that we now can record and put them on the website. I think that helps more people who can't attend. I think that's something we wouldn't want to end, even, you know, going back a hundred percent in person. We still want to give people access, especially when we think about those vulnerable populations, people that are homebound, you know, that they could still participate in their local government and see what's going on. So we would do some streaming. It's just a weather a question of if it's a hybrid, we have some people on the screen, some in person. If the full board's in person, that actually makes it easier for us to just live stream it.
Okay.
And then people can choose to come. But yeah, I was thinking the auditorium gives us the most space to spread out.
That's important, that accessibility issue, because I think that's something that has been borne out by the pandemic, is that I think people that have been disabled have been asking for better accessibility for years, and it wasn't until the pandemic occurred that able-bodied people said, hey, we can work remotely. Let's all work remotely, that I think has become normalized. So, yes, certainly, I think we should continue to make this as accessible as possible.
I agree.
And the closed captioning is nice.
Barbara, how do you feel?
I feel that it would be a pleasure for me to see you all in person. And I think it would be wonderful to go back to what you were normally doing in person.
Okay, so I'm comfortable with it, too. I think, Kate, it sounds like all the trustees are comfortable being in person. And so maybe, I guess, I don't know, we really need a motion here.
I don't, I mean, I think if you guys tell us to have it in person, we didn't make a motion to go virtual, we just did it. So I don't think we need one now, but you can just, I mean, you guys are directing us to go in person. So I just, just to make sure I'm capturing, to make sure we're all on the same page. So starting with the June board meeting, we will be in person. I'll have us in the auditorium, so we won't be back to Civic. We'll have everyone distanced, the board members distanced on the stage with, you know, like Anna, Kelly, Jennifer, and I as well. We'll have members of the public that can sit in the auditoriums and sit, you know, back, you know, tons of feet apart from each other if they so choose. But we'll also have a live streaming option so people can watch it. And and then we'll also still be recorded and put on the website. And then we'll, of course, also all still be wearing masks. I'm presuming unless something, you know, we have a huge change because we still won't have the vaccination of the younger people and will still require masks in the library. So we'll do masks in the auditorium on the stage, distance, live stream starting in June.
On that, okay, question about technology, are we going to each have a microphone for masks and distance?
So I'm going to talk to Ariel, our auditorium coordinator, who has become our webinar and live stream expert to see what she recommends, whether we each have individual microphones or whether we could set up some on the stage to ensure that we have clear sound. So I'll work with her to make sure what we come up with and we'll let the board know before the next meeting how that'll look.
Okay. And then in terms of timing, it'll always be 7:30 that we'll start.
You guys approved that March for the fiscal year 2022. If you ever want to change date, time of meetings, you are more than welcome to do that. We can certainly amend the schedule for this year. Or we, if you wanted to wait and think and propose some different times when we get into the next fiscal year, I mean, this fiscal year just started, but I can certainly put that on the agenda if it's something for the next meeting, if the board wants to talk about dates and times.
I just wasn't, I wasn't asking as a, you know, let's change it. I just want to make sure we're still kind of, because it's, you know, moving back to in-person. We had different times with the Zoom, so making sure everyone's on the same page. And then I still think, well, I think that, you know, with the meetings themselves, maybe we'll still have a little more formality as we're moving into in-person with continuing some of the roll call votes where we might otherwise not have a roll call vote. So that as we're still continuing the live stream, we're getting everything in a manner that is clear for the public who's watching the live stream.
I think that sounds like a great idea. You can always, you could never go wrong with making every vote a roll call vote.
Okay. Unless anyone else has thoughts on that topic, we can move on to the next one. So the next topic is the Class 6B request or for the Northbrook Distribution Center LLC. There's information in the packet. This one There's information in the packet. This one happens to be a building that has been vacant for several years. Is a potential owner and operator who was once in Northbrook and is now in Buffalo Grove, but will be returning to Northbrook with a extension of their current operations. It seems like one where there's more of a natural affinity to granting the 6B because of the length of time where the property's been vacant and the age of the property and the need to have the property have some work done on it. In reading through the materials that were given to us, the village or trustees, when they first considered it, I think some of their questions have less to do with the appropriateness of the 6B and more to do with some of the concerns about the type of industry that the potential owner operator was in. And, you know, whether or not that might relate to potential pollution within the community. It seems like the operator in order has kind of addressed those through some of the attorney's responses. Specifically, the question I think the village was asking is whether or not, since they're in the plastics industry, if they would be doing any manufacturing that might have some form of chemical waste that would be a concern to Sky Harbor residents and tenants or owners. I mean, the answer was no. My understanding from when this was presented initially at the EDC meeting in a couple of months ago, was that this is going to be a distribution and fulfillment center as opposed to a manufacturing facility. So they're looking at finished products that'll be coming in and out as opposed to doing some form of actual manufacturing, but that may not be 100% accurate. I don't know if that's been revised. My personal thoughts are this one seems like it's one that we should recommend to the village that it be approved so that we get a new tenant in an empty building and the village does get some form of, you know, comfort that the current tax level will remain. I don't know if there are any thoughts from other trustees as to whether or not they have questions or concerns about recommending approving the 6B.
I have no questions or concerns, and I also recommend it.
Sharon, you were shaking your head, did you?
I agree. I agree. No, I think it's, I agree with approving the 6B.
Okay. Abby, Jamie, did either of you have any?
Not particularly. It's, it's fine to me.
Okay. Kayhan? Did you have any thoughts?
I know, no, 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 that seems clear. I thought what you just said about primarily fulfillment, distribution center was helpful.
Barbara, it's your first 6B.
I agree. I think that if it's a fulfillment center rather than a manufacturing. And I think it would be nice to have some kind of a reassurance that that's really what's intended. But I agree that it would best be developed.
Okay. And I think judging by the information from the village board in the write-up, that the village board, when they're reviewing and considering it, they're going to be focusing on those issues some more. From our perspective, we're just giving feedback to the villages of whether or not as a public body, you know, we have any concerns about it. Usually it's the focus is on the fiscal element. Since the 6B locks in a specific rate of tax for the property and gives them a break over the next 10 to 12 years. And so the concern is from our perspective, how it's going to impact our budget typically. So up here, you know, where it's a vacant property, having it as a tenant would be better than having it vacant. They will get a break, but, you know, one of the downsides, if you don't recommend or approve the 6B, you have no idea how long it's going to remain vacant and how long it'll take until there's a, you know, new owner or tenant that will, you know, help increase the value of it so that you're paying taxes. But seeing that everyone seems to be in favor of it, I'll ask for a motion to recommend to the village board that they approve the Class 6B request from Northbrook Distribution Center. Is there a motion? I think Kayhan, is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll do it. It'll be Barbara's first.
Barbara, thank you for the second. Jennifer, we can get a roll call.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yeah.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
And so I now, just so Barbara's aware, so Barbara, I now send over the recommendation to the village that they then present to the village board. I'll also ask just to confirm on the manufacturing piece and let you guys know what I hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is to move into an executive session, closed session. So I'm going to read the motion and then ask if someone will also move. If I can have a motion to go on to closed section pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two parentheses C1 for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. And five ILCS 120 slash two parentheses C2 collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Is there a motion, please?
Oh, moved.
You got it.
Thank you, Sharon.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jennifer, can we get the roll call?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, so, oh, sorry, Jay. So now I am going to put the link to the closed session so we can do a separate recording. So for those that are attending, we're going to be leaving, but leaving one person here. You're welcome to stay until we come back and to open session. But we will be pausing the recording at this point. And everyone can click on the link that I just sent in the chat to adjourn and go to closed session. So I'll see you over there in a minute. Abby, question?
Sorry, I know the technology person asking the question, but do we have, we have to hit leave and then go to the other and click on the link, right?
Yeah, you can either click, well, you can click on the link and then it will open it and will say, do you want to leave the one you're in and join this one? And you can just say yes. If you're on an iPad, I don't know, or you can just copy it and then leave and then paste it into.
Okay. See you over there.
Okay.
All right. So the general session is reopened at 9:07 PM. So in the, can I have a motion to create a committee for the review of our processes for the review of the executive director, please?
Motion to create a committee to review the executive director.
For a second?
Second.
Barbara, I think you a second. And Kate, I heard you second. I thought, too. Jennifer, can we get a roll call?
Jennifer, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. I just, I got it. Ms. Bernstein?
I'm muted. Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Kayhan, Barbara and Mara, will you volunteer to be on the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. And so the purpose of the committee will be to help us evaluate the processes for evaluating the executive director. They come up with a, you know, plan or improvements to that process for the, not the next, the actual evaluation in June, but for the I wish to occur after that. Okay. Kate, I think that the only thing else on the agenda is the agenda building. And so on the agenda building, we have the climate action plan presentations between now and the next meeting. The Cedar Lane project. It says updating our FOIA policy. So I assume that means that the next meeting will have a presentation.
Yeah, you'll have an updated policy, so it'll list the new officers, the new budget for the new fiscal year, et cetera.
Okay. And then approve new bank resolutions for new signers. And then for some reason, Kate, this is Mara in parentheses.
It does, because Mara is our new trustee who isn't already a signer, so we have to sign her in.
Okay. So that means that we need to have all the officers present, please, at the next meeting. If there's anyone who's not present, please be sure to let Anna know ahead of time so she can arrange for you to sign the bank resolutions.
And if you could arrive a little bit early, we can have you sign them before the meeting and get everything filled out so that or stay after, either or.
Okay. All right. So unless there's any motions for additional.
Just one more thing. So then we'll also, I'll have the executive director review then on the next agenda as well, based on the conversations you just had, so.
Yep, for a closed session. Okay. If anyone else has any new business or issues they'd like to present for the next meeting, if not, then I will declare the meeting adjourned at
Our move, Jay. That's a power move. I like it.
Carlos never did that.
I'm waiting for this.
I'll give Kate credit because she decided that we don't need to go to the process.
I tried to convince Carlos. He really liked doing the motion and second on that one.
Oh, I know. He always did, but Jay just, Jay just went for it. Total power move.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.